I hope everyone can hear me okay. Currently, we have seven school committee members, so we have reached our quorum. And we hope that Marisol and Anna will join us later on. And so, we will first start off with a pledge of allegiance. So, I have a flag here for us, so if we can begin. Let's do this. Okay? Everyone can unmute themselves, so we can do the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag and the United States of America. To the republic. Public. Justice. Dance. One nation, under God. Indivisible. Liberty. Justice. For all.
Awesome, great. Go ahead and mute yourself again. Thanks team. So, for this meeting, today, we are going to have two meetings. So, the first meeting is where we vote on school choice. And the recommendation from the superintendent is that we remain. Only correct me if I'm wrong, and the answer should be no, right? Is that the recommendation? That we remain a. School choice.
That we decide on school choice and that we forego this school choice in order to have seats for Chelsea students.
Great, and so.
Because we are already at capacity.
Thank you so much for clarifying. So, Ms. Seha, if we can get a roll call going.
Oh, give one second.
Hey Kelly.
Ms. Garcia, can you, I know we, every year, we've had issues with this question. But if it's a yes vote, that means you're foregoing the school choice. If you say no, is that you want Chelsea to be a choice.
I know me. Can you hear me?
I can't hear that loud. It's very low.
So, sorry, just to clarify, seeing as I'm first on the roll call. If, if we want to make sure that the spots are available for our students, we are voting yes on this vote.
Exactly.
Yes.
Wait a minute. Repeat that again, you vote yes if we want the school system?
If you would like to make sure that the spots are available for Chelsea students, we are voting yes on this motion. If you would like for our other students to have the choice of enrolling in Chelsea, then.
So, open enrollment, you say no, right? You don't want it? Right?
Well, if I, if I may, guys, hi, this is Marisol. Hi Kelly.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. Is it, would this, could this question be posed to Dr. Albeida? Or to our chairwoman, if one or both could give a brief, one-minute, two-minute summary of what the definition of school choice is for anybody that might be watching or following?
Okay, so, school choice means that we would open up our system for students outside of Chelsea, the Chelsea. Right now, historically, Chelsea has always voted to forego school choice. The reason why we forego school choice is because our schools are already at capacity. Right. And so, we want to make sure, if we vote to forego school choice, then that means we're saying all of the seats that we have available in our schools are for Chelsea students. So, we're foregoing, in other words, we're saying no to school choice. So, the answer to Roberto's point, you would vote yes. Or no, but if you want the seats to go for Chelsea students, you vote yes.
Chelsea only, Chelsea students only, yes, alright.
Can you guys hear me?
Clarifying, Dr. Albeida. Yes, Henry, we can hear you.
Your volume is very low, I can't hear you guys that well, I'm sorry. It was up, now it's very low now.
Do you have a volume on yours? Henry, put your volume.
Yeah, it's very low. I heard Richard earlier talking and everything and stuff, but now my volume is very low.
Can you hear me now? Can you give me some?
I can see you at a very low volume.
Alright, we're gonna try our best, try to put the phone closer to your ear perhaps, so that you can hear us. Team, again, thank you so much for those of you who asked those questions. I apologize for not being so transparent and clear on that. Thank Dr. Albeida for clarifying. And so, if we can, Ms. Sehas, get a roll call going. And so, as a reminder, if you'd like to keep the seats open to Chelsea students, you are voting yes on this roll call. If you would like to open it up to other districts, you are voting no.
I had a question, so, on the agenda, it says we are not voting. I was wondering if that's what you guys wanted to do today, to vote for the school choice?
Yes.
I think we're, we should be okay to vote on it today. Does there, does, does anyone oppose of this? Of this vote?
If I may chime in, just to add, we were supposed to vote on this over a month ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll start the roll call. So, considering. School year, 2020 to 2021. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Yes. Ms. Enriquez? Is she here?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Seven votes in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Sehas, the motion carries. Dr. Albeida, I don't have the agenda for this portion, I believe that was it for this portion of this.
It is, you can adjourn, adjourn.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
A five-minute break before starting a regular school committee meeting, and I have the agenda posted for you here. Yeah, I think this could be a good time for us to, I don't know, make sure our audio is working and make sure we can all hear each other. Henry, how is your audio on your end?
It's still low, it was loud earlier, but now it's very low now.
Okay.
Somebody sign back in, sign on, sign back in?
Yeah, I mean, we have five minutes.
Let me sign, be right back.
Sorry.
I see me.
I see Lucia.
I think Richard's.
Are we supposed to have?
Richard, I'm sorry, did you say? Sorry, oh. So, Marisol, to answer your question, it's being shared on cable and also on.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, I can hear better now.
Awesome.
Yay!
We can hear you, Henry.
Okay.
I am calling to order the school committee meeting, April 30th. And we will start with our. And so, yeah, let's get it going. Everyone can unmute themselves and put your hand, your right hand on your heart. We can begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag and the United States of America. To the republic. Public. Justice. Dance. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. What liberty and justice for all.
Number three on the agenda, do I have an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that occurred on March 5th in closure A?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular school committing of March 5th.
I think you do that. Do we have a second? Thank you, Anna Rosemary. Do we, any presentations?
We do not have any presentations.
Awesome, and Dr. Albeida, do we have any comments that were mailed to us for the public, public section comment?
I will defer to Veronica. There were no comments submitted.
Awesome, thanks so much for Veronica. Alright, now, we will go to the agenda. Reported the superintendent of schools, and Dr. Albeida, I'll turn it over to you.
I do have a report, it's a little bit longer than normal, because we've, so much has happened in the last month and a half since we've last met. So, I'm going to, a lot of my report, you have already heard through updates, but I just, I really want to capture this for people who are watching, and also, we have some updated information. And I just, before I start my report, I would like to thank this wonderful team, cabinet, school committee, and our staff for an amazing job throughout this crisis. I can't think of a better team to work with, and I am so fortunate to be in Chelsea, and I just want to say thank you. We are strong, little but mighty is our city, and I am so proud to be part of Chelsea Public Schools. So, I will go ahead and start with my report, and then I will submit it for the record. On March 10th, we called the first closure of Clark Avenue Middle School on March 11th due to potential exposure of COVID-19. Little did I know that March 10th would mark the beginning of a crisis, at least for me, that would, was unprecedented and impacted our lives in a way, in ways that has resulted in much uncertainty and pause for our Chelsea community and the world. Since this crisis first began, I have seen our Chelsea Public School staff come together in a way that is heartwarming and gives me hope that we will come out of this better than before. I have witnessed countless acts of kindness, creativity, innovation, persistence, caring to our students and Chelsea families. I cannot thank our staff enough for everything they have done to date and continue to do as this emergency continues. That said, the purpose of this memo is to provide a comprehensive update regarding district activity during this emergency to date. So, I'm going to start first with the Chelsea Emergency Food Program. Our first priority over six weeks ago was meeting the basic needs of our students and our families with food sustenance. By Monday, March 16th of 2020, just three days after closing schools, the Chelsea Public Schools Emergency Food Program was operating at five sites across Chelsea. We were able to expand to seven sites by the following Wednesday. The food program has been working five days per week, serving an average of 2,000 to 2,300 meals per day. That's breakfast and lunch, so each day about 4,600 meals. Currently, the. Served a total of 124,000 meals. Children do not need to be present for someone to pick up a meal, and we operate under an honor system in terms of how many meals an individual may receive. The state and federal government have authorized the food distribution, and we are currently receiving reimbursement for the meals at the amount equal to the summer meals program rate. Our commitment to providing free breakfast and lunch to children and youth in Chelsea remains a high priority. Recognizing that many students do not have access to technology at home, our staff worked quickly to develop and implement a process to distribute Chromebooks. Chromebooks and mobile hotspots to students as needed. Principals designed the distribution process for their schools and solicited volunteers to greet families and distribute services, devices. On the first day of distribution, which was Tuesday, 26th, teams distributed 2,000 Chromebooks to students. And at the close of the distribution window, a total of 3,500 devices had been provided to students in grades 1 through 12. With each device, IT staff provided information on how to access Wi-Fi at home and expectations on how to use and protect Chromebook equipment. IT staff continues to support families each day via email and phone. Educational digital resources is the next topic. To support students' continued engagement and learning, the curriculum team quickly implemented Phase 1 of a, what is now a four-phase effort by creating the CPS Digital Resources website. This website provides access to students to all district digital platforms and websites that do not require teacher management or assessment. The resources are presented by grade level and work on smartphone as well as computers, and these materials were available to students by Monday, March 16th. Moving on to Phase 3, teachers and administrators work to create enrichment activities for their Google classrooms with the support of coaches and new teachers. Teachers received training on the use of Google Classroom and have been remarkably quick in using that tool to provide their students with educational content to support continued learning. Then, on April 6th, 2020, we launched our official remote, official remote learning plan, which was Phase 3, after working in collaboration with the Chelsea Teachers Union to outline goals and parameters for remote learning. We are currently collaborating with the Chelsea Teachers Union on Remote Learning Plan 2.0, since school is now being closed for a longer duration. Our team had to also then move quickly to negotiate evaluation contracts with all of our unions. So, due to the fact that our teachers are not physically present to teach and be observed during instruction, we collaborated with our Chelsea Teachers Union to sign a simple memorandum of understanding outlining temporary procedures for our teacher evaluation process. We are proud of the fact that our collaboration with the Chelsea Teachers Union to outline parameters led to a shared agreement and an expeditious way to provide guidance for our leaders and our teachers. We are on the forefront of thinking through issues as we work collaboratively with our local union. We have also worked with other unions to outline temporary procedures for evaluation and processes. Then, so, we took care of the mills, we took care of meeting the needs of our teachers, all the, all the technical pieces, and then there's this whole piece of social emotional support, because we realize that our families and our students are going through a lot during this time, including our staff. So, recognizing the need to support. Reach out to social workers and school counselors for emotional support. This was posted on our website two weeks after we closed schools. Social workers and school counselors have also been keeping in touch with their students that they normally provide service to throughout the year. Additionally, when teachers are reaching out to students and talking to students, students are being referred to social workers and school counselors. Our social workers and school counselors have been extremely busy during this time. This one, the next topic is employee pay. In addition to supporting our students and families, we have taken steps to provide staff with a sense of financial stability. Our staff are being paid during this time, with the exception of substitute staff members who would not be paid during the school year if not requested to report to work. Ongoing work expectations have been documented for each school and work unit in a series of work expectation documents maintained by Human Resources. Details include, all full-time and part-time staff who are salaried or have regular weekly hours will continue to be paid throughout this emergency school closure. Stipends or lane changes will continue to be paid. Stipends for spring duties, for example, performances, athletic coaches, will be paid in full if completed. If the duties have been partially completed, a flat rate will be applied. Hourly pay that is provided for additional duties, such as breakfast, lunch duty, loss of prep after school meetings will not be paid since the work is not occurring. Stipends will not be paid if work has not started. If committees and teams that were in place and compensated hourly prior to school closure continue to meet during this time, time will be documented and compensation will be provided. In addition to above, and in consultation with the city law office, cafeteria workers and security and safety personnel who are not deemed essential in their bargaining agreement are being paid for hours and are voluntarily working during this emergency, and we are so grateful for their work. This is in addition to the base pay they are scheduled to receive. The next topic is budget. For our school year 2021, if you recall, our budget, we were prepared to present our budget six weeks ago. Right? Since our, since this crisis has happened, our budget has completely, is completely shifted. And so, with that, we will have to amend our budget as a result of this crisis. While our Chelsea Public Schools has risen to meet the needs and the demands of this crisis, the future undoubtedly brings incredible turmoil. Not the least of which will be economic. We will face challenges that will demand not only good stewardship of our resources, but also difficult and even painful decisions will have to be made. I am committed to making these decisions with integrity, with the most important and critical mission of teaching and learning at the forefront. Based on what I have seen since this pandemic has begun, I know that our community will come through this difficult economic time, and we will get through this together. At this current time, I, I am still waiting for information on our budget, but I do know that it's going to be a difficult budget season. And the final thoughts. Each day, our Chelsea Public School staff support our students and families in a myriad of different ways, and will continue to do so throughout this crisis. In the upcoming weeks, teams will continue to support remote student learning, while others will begin to plan for summer school and the re-entry of school. We have to be cognizant of the fact that many of our families have experienced much pain and loss during this time. Thus, we will be ready to support our families through this process, and in this process, we will all begin to heal in time. Again, I cannot thank our staff enough for their ongoing efforts and commitment to our students and families. I am grateful and humbled to work with such a dedicated staff and this beautiful Chelsea community, and I thank you. And that concludes this report, and I do have something that's very important, and I announced it yesterday. And that con- uh concludes this report, and I do have something that's very important, and I announced it yesterday. And I I am pleased to announce that I did remove the ad interim from Principal Mark Martin- Martinov's title at Chelsea High School. Uh Mark uh has served Chel- uh uh been principal of Chelsea since October seventeen. He has done an amazing job of leading Chelsea High School during a time of transition. So I just want to thank Mark publicly for the work that he has done this year so far. I know Mark will continue to do great things for Chelsea High School. And Chelsea High School family is stronger because of Mark being there, and congratulations to Mark. And this concludes my report.
Um Dr. Abeta, thank you so much for sharing that. Team, we are going to take a quick thirty-minute pause. We're having technical difficulties, and so um let's just take a quick pause and then we will resume and and uh and I will open it the, open it up to the floor to see if we have any questions from uh school committee. Continue with the agenda in our meeting, and he will get um another computer um and fix it, and so let's continue. Um it is streaming on cable, but it is lagging on Facebook, and so we will be sure to post the recorded video and all of the necessary documents online so our families and community members have access to all of these documents. Um so, Dr. Abeta, thank you so much for sharing. Team, I'm gonna open it up to the floor. I know Jeanette uh right Ms. Velez um had a question for you, so Jeanette.
Thank you, Chairwoman Garcia. Um Almi, well, Dr. Abeta, sorry. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the Chelsea Public School staff, our food workers. I know they're working so hard um to provide those meals for our students, and I'm so grateful for that. Um when I heard other districts had stopped, I was so proud to say that Chelsea didn't stop and that we will not stop. So I thank you for that. Um I know it's uh uncertain times and everybody's trying to do the best that they can. Um so as you know, um I work in the community, so I hear from a lot of um families, and so my question to you, Dr. Abeta, is Chromebooks and hotspots. So many families picked up and many weren't able to pick up, and I know um there's a list of the families who missed it. Uh but there's also some families now that couldn't afford to keep paying internet cable, so now they need a hotspot. Uh their children is are not doing the work, and they're very worried that the children are gonna be left behind. Um the students are getting frustrated because they get their daily text from the teachers with the school look uh work. Uh um they're not able to access, so what can you tell us um about those students that are missing the Chromebooks, and I know there's been talks of coming up with a plan of how to get them the Chromebooks, but if you could just say a few words of um what will be happening for the next few weeks on that, um because you know, the kids really feel um disconnected and they really want to do the work, and the parents are also feeling concerned about it.
Absolutely. So with the Chromebooks, because we have uh so many cases of of coronavirus in Chelsea, we're we're not doing the mass dis- distribution that we've done previously. But we are working on plans to get Chromebooks to students. Um right now, we have Chelsea High School working to deploy some more Chromebooks, working with our uh operation staff and I T staff, so that way we can do it in a safe manner and not have crowds of people at the school. So we're working on getting Chromebooks out to more students, so we have like, for example, we know that we have a group of kids at Chelsea High School that needs Chromebooks. And so I have been in communicating uh communication today with the principal about how we would get that to them, so we're working on that right now. Um additionally, with the hotspots, we are, I know the Department of um second uh Department of Education is concerned about many students who don't have Wi-Fi access or internet access. And so they are really working to to get resources to communities that don't have these resources, so that's that's gonna be something that we we have to do something about, and we are going to work on. I I don't at this time know what it's gonna look like. We did have, we had purchased over two hundred hotspots. And I don't know how many we have left. I don't think it's, I I can, I know we have a waitlist. But we did purchase hotspots for for me. Yeah, we're still working on that piece. Um but Chromebooks, we have enough, we have Chromebooks enough for students in grades first grade through twelve for every student currently, so we um we do have a deployment pla- plan. Where, like I said, we're working in a different way. We can't do it the way we did it over uh about a month ago. Because it it, we we don't want to put our staff and our families in a place where they're waiting in lines and being exposed to to the virus, so we're trying to figure out a way to do it safely. And at the same time, making sure we get the Chromebooks out. Uh I'm committed to that because we we know that our students need to have that. We're definitely working on what I would say phase two right now.
Thank you, Dr. Abeta.
You're welcome.
Thank you, uh Ms. Velez. Um team, do we have any other questions or comments?
Just had a quick question, just um roughly, uh and you might have mentioned this, I I might have just um might have cut out like for a second, um. Uh do we know like roughly how many students we're talking about for the like um especially the the hotspots, I think, which are the ones that that we have viewer off? If I if I heard you right.
I, we have a waitlist right now, and I can defer that to our uh to Monica. Monica, would, do you know how many students are on our waitlist for hotspots?
So um we have, I think, just under three hundred students asking for Chromebooks. Only um a subset of those need hotspots. We do have more hotspots available for our families. They can um call the I T office at six one seven four six six five zero seven zero and let us know the name of the child, and we'll put them on the list and how to reach them. We'll put them on the list for the hotspots when we're um gonna be distributing them. They can also let us know if any of the Chromebooks um are damaged and need a replacement, or if they don't have a Chromebook as yet. And as the superintendent says, um as soon as we have the plan in place, we will bring more devices out to the students as soon as we possibly can.
The information is on the website for the the number for people to call as well.
Yes, if you go under about Chelsea Public Schools About and then COVID nineteen response, there's a whole page about the Chromebook distribution with the contact information and also handouts on how to access Wi-Fi um from different providers and things like that. That's all on our website.
But I would say to anyone who needs support, please call us. Please, please reach out, call us, so we can help. Uh whether it's helping provide, getting access to a provider or if it's it's a hotspot and figuring out how to use the hotspot, whatever it may be, uh a lot of families may not know how to um to get a hotspot going, so please call us so we can help provide that support.
Alright, team, thanks so much for those questions. Uh Dr. Abeta, um we are going next. Uh next item on the agenda is student achievement. Um so if you can turn it to the appropriate person, that'd be great.
Do you like me to chime in?
Yes, that would be great. Sorry, this is.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, you know, working out the protocol. Okay. Um so this evening, I will be uh sharing with you the um indicators of success that I always give you. I don't know if Kelly, you would like to share that on the screen, um or if people just would like to follow along on their computers. Um but tonight, it, this is the um indicators for March, um and I will say that uh but we continue to have our our data and our and our information that I would like to share with you. So tonight, we're going to talk about the monthly indicators, the quarterly updates, and then our usual additional relevant data in the appendix. So if you start on page three um with our attendance, again, this is only from March first through March twelfth, as we closed on March thirteenth. Um and you'll see that in grades two through eight, we are hitting our target of ninety-five percent. Actually, in grades two and seven, we're off by one tenth, so I'm rounding, but um very close there. Um we are also over ninety percent in grades one K and pre-K. Um and we are still working in the eighties in at the high school level. Um we are point one lower than we were last month. Um and we are a bit lower than we were last year at this time. Um but again, it's not much movement from the last time I reported in that it's only nine days of school. Um if you could turn to page four, um we can look at our quarterly grades. So um third quarter started in January, um at the end of January, and went through February and into March. So we actually had thirty-three days of school um in third quarter, thirty-three out of the forty-four. So we did go ahead and we have given students grades and we've completed those grades for third quarter. Um so if you see an indicator for for grade four and who have a three or better in reading, writing, math, and science. Um and you will see that those have increased between five to ten points from quarter two. It, which is about where they were at this time last year as well. If you turn to page five, you'll see the same in the same things for uh grade eight students with a C or better. And here you'll see that E L A and math both went up um ten to twelve points, and writing and science went up uh so, sorry, writing went up one point and science dropped one point. These are kids, the percent of kids that are receiving a C or better in eighth grade. If you turn to page six, um our dropout, again, we only had a few days of school. Um and we only had one student drop out during that time. Um so we are, this is as of March twelfth. We are twenty students less dropped out than we were last year at this time. Um but that also is because we've had less school. Um so overall, our, the one person that dropped out was another L student um in grade ten. Those details are on page seven. Um and you'll see that all of our percentages are lower than they were last year at this time. Um regular education is lower, as is L students with disabilities. Our subgroups, we still are struggling with dropout, um especially with Ls, as you'll see at the chart at the bottom of the page. L students have our highest dropout rate, followed by students with disabilities. If you turn to page nine and look at our um mobility rate. So as of March twelfth, we've had over one thousand kids either come or go, one thousand forty, which is a huge number if you think about the our mobility. We've had sixteen point six percent year-to-date. And that that is lower than last year. Uh last year at this time, we were at eighteen point seven percent, and this year was sixteen point six, so it is lower. Uh but it's still a huge amount of kids when you think about the fact that we have a little over six thousand kids, you know, we have about six thousand four hundred kids in the district. Having a thousand come and go is is pretty, it's a lot. Um overall, if you just look um in the month of March, every grade band gained more than they lost. Um so overall, we ended up with twenty-nine more kids. Um and most of those were in the elementary and middle school. Um overall, the biggest number is at the high school, where four hundred and twenty-four kids have either come or gone this year um for a net gain of about seventy-nine. Um if you turn to page ten, the last page, um we're looking at the um grades for the high school. Um so in quarter three, you'll see that overall, the percentages of students um are dropping, dropped a little bit in grade nine. It's very similar to where we were in grade three, uh quarter three last year, very similar. However, you will note that we have had a bigger decrease, which is good, in the number of kids that are failing three or four courses. So we've had that decrease from quarter two to quarter three, but we also have that from last year. So we have about eleven kids less from quarter two and about ten kids less from last year. We're really working hard on those safety nets to really support the kids that are really struggling, um and that is paying off. Similarly, in grade ten, we actually cut the number of kids that have failed um three or four courses in half between quarter two and quarter three. And that's due to some really good work up at the high school around safety nets and meeting with parents and some really good work. Um it's still not where we would like it to be, um but we are, our work is showing and paying off, um and we're hoping to improve it. So those are all my data points for tonight. Of course, they're a little bit strange in that they're as of March twelfth. Um but we did want to get it on the books, um because these were, this is the data um that we will use in the future. If there's, anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Uh school committee members, are there any questions for Ms. Kent? Thank you, Ms. Kent. Uh, school committee members, are there any questions for Ms. Kent? Actually, Ms. Kent, uh, I had a quick question, um. I know we are in a, uh. How will, um, the indicators of success look like in May, right? Like, how would you measure?
The basic, I have, unfortunately, a lot of these indicators, um, require that we're in school. So, for example, attendance is no longer being kept, um, per state recommendation. Um, and we're also not being held accountable for attendance by DESI. So, you know, some of these indicators will not be held. Um, as far as grades go, I'm sort of stealing my thunder from later, um, but I'll give you a little preview. But for quarter four, we are, have decided that we will be passing. Uh, we will not be, be giving grades to students in quarter four. And I can go into more detail later in the meeting when we get to that portion. But therefore, a lot of these indicators, to be honest, won't, won't work, um, for the rest of the year. Some of them will, um, we'll be able to talk about the graduates, um, in indicator nine. Um, we will, we are taking AP tests, um, that is continuing, so we'll have that. Um, and, you know, some of, some of these will be relevant, but many of them will be stipend based on school not being, um, happening in the brick and mortar.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. School members, um, are there any other questions before we move on? Awesome. Thank you, Kent. Alright, Dr. Beta, if you can share personnel update?
Sure, I, the personnel updates are included in the enclosures and I would like to commend the personal up, personnel update and the enrollment update for the record.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. Next, we have committee reports.
Make a motion, we accept those committee reports minutes and commend them to the record.
Do I have a second? Thank you, moving right along. Seeing as we do not have any unfinished business, we will move right along to new business. The first item is consideration and action to accept twelve thousand dollars in, sorry, twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars in increased federal grant funding for Title I, Title II A, IDA, and early childhood special education enclosure e- explanation. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has adjusted Chelsea's allocations for fiscal year twenty twenty for Title I, Title II A, IDEA, and early childhood special education grants. Uses of this, of the funds include labor and benefits, professional development conferences, instructional materials, test, assessment materials, indirect costs and other costs in support of the programs. Mass, uh, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for this acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sehas, if we can get a roll call for this item?
Consideration and action to accept twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars in increased federal grant funding for Title I, Title II A, IDA, and early childhood special education. Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Did Ms. Hernandez leave?
No, I'm here.
Uh, Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
And Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative and one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next, consideration and action to accept the Early Grade Literacy Grant in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. Explanation, the district will receive an additional eight hundred and fifty dollars from DESI to, uh, to purchase instructional supplies at the Early Learning Center and Sokolowski Schools. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only.
The Early Grade Literacy Grant in the amount of seven thousand dollars, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, consideration and action to accept forty thou- forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars from DESI for the Title III English Language Acquisition Academic Achievement Program for English Learners and Immigrant Children and Youth Grant. Explanation, the federal Title III program provides supplemental resources to local school districts to help ensure that English learners and immigrant children and youth attain English proficiency and develop high levels of academ- academic achievement in English. The grant funds will be used to provide supplemental extended-year programming, including staffing and other expenses to support of the program. I'm sorry, in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sehas, can we get a roll call?
Consideration and action to accept forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars from DESI for the Title III English Language Acquisition and Academic Achievement Program for English Learners and Immigrant Children and Youth Grant. Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
And Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, consideration and action to accept twenty thousand dollars from DESI for the Systems for Student Success Initiative Grant. Explanation, competitive systems for student success initiative supports districts that want to strengthen systems and practices that promote students' ability to thrive in, in, in and outside of school. The grant funds may be used for stipends, contractual services, professional development, and to purchase supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of system-level changes. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Twenty-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the school committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept twenty thousand dollars from DESI for the Systems for Student Success Initiative Grant. Mister Jimenez? Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, consideration and action to accept a grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the Anna B. Stern's Charitable Foundation for the Intergenerational Literacy Program. Explanation, the intergenerational literacy program has successfully received an award of fifteen thousand dollars to support the programs, ESOL, family literacy classes. The funds can be used for the cost of staffing, instructional supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept the grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the Anna B. Stern's Charitable Foundation for the Intergenerational Literacy Program. Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative and one absent, motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. With an estimated value of three hundred and fifty dollars. Explanation, Capic has generously donated five small boxes of books for cho- for students of all ages. The books are being distributed to schools across the district. The estimated value of this donation is three hundred and fifty dollars. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee.
Consideration and action to accept the donation of five boxes of books from Capic for students of all ages with an estimated value of three hundred and fifty dollars. Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago? Ms. Santiago? Mister Wilson?
Yes.
She's muted, she's muted. That's, I think, why we couldn't hear her.
Do you guys want to do the roll call again or leave it?
Let's try it again.
She was nodding, if you want to click that to say yes, I don't know if you need a, an affirmative, yes, but.
Does someone want to quickly text her just so we can get her vote and then we can move on to the next item? I believe we need a verbal yes.
Yeah, you, you need a verbal.
Marisol, can you unmute yourself?
It seems like Marisol's having technical difficulties. Yes, okay. Um, so, what is that, Ms. Sehas? Seven in the affirmative?
Seven.
Okay, the motion carries.
Are we, do we have a few more votes? I'm wondering if she could put it on the chat, or do you need to hear her?
Uh, Ms. Sehas, will a chat submission suffice for a vote?
As long as she's here, um, that will suffice.
Perfect, great.
Well, Marisol, you could, in the chat, put your answer to the vote, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Velez, that was a great idea.
Getting used to this new normal, huh? Wow.
Great, great. Ms. Sehas, uh, does that make eight in the affirmative now?
Eight in the affirmative, one absent.
Awesome. Next, consideration and action to accept the donation of five sets of rob- robotics play, six hundred robotics kits, and ten HTC Vive virtual reality systems for Dell with an estimated value of seven thousand two hundred dollars. Explanation, the gift is made as an in-kind match for a Dell Youth Learning Grant that was awarded to UMass Boston. Chelsea Public Schools has participated and is now able to receive seven thousand two hundred dollars in robotics and virtual reality items from Dell. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept the donation of five sets of robotics play, six hundred robotics kits, and ten HTC Vive virtual reality systems from Dell with an estimated value of seven thousand two hundred dollars. Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, consideration and action to accept an award of up to thirty thousand dollars, um, Boston University recognition of the Hook School's work hosting Saudi teachers in January twenty twenty. In January twenty twenty, the Hook School hosted seven teachers from Saudi Arabia on behalf of global programs at Boston University, and the university has agreed to provide up to thirty thousand dollars in recognition of the school's efforts. The funds will be used to provide buy supplies, equipment, and other materials in support of students, teachers. So, sorry, um, supportive students, teachers, and families at the Hook School. Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven Eight, provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept an award of up to thirty thousand dollars from Boston University in recognition of the Hook School's work hosting Saudi teachers in January twenty twenty. Mister Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirm- eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of nine hundred and seven thousand dollars to move funds from multiple accounts. Explanation, funds are available from salary savings generated when staff were hired at a lower rate that was budgeted for and/or when positions have been vacant for periods of time during the school year. Salary savings also include unused stipends for after-school programs and clubs. In addition, expenses for textbooks and professional development are lower than anticipated. Funding and transfer to district administration for outside counsel assisting with pandemic response and labor negotiations, and for consultants to increasing, increasingly automate human resources and payroll processing. Funding for information technology will be used to significantly increase this year's order of Chromebooks. Replace a portion projection equipment district-wide and buy additional equipment and software to enhance district technology infrastructure. Do we have a motion? Roll, sorry.
Consideration and action to a, to approve a budget transfer in the amount of nine hundred and seven thousand to move funds from multiple acc- Yeah?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
And Mister Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative, one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, consideration and action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty for salaried positions at, as it relates to, to supervisor of attendance and attendance officer. Each year, the school committee reviews and approves a non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for hourly positions and salaried positions. The schedule currently has a position entitled Supervisor of Attendance and classification F. The position title refers to a state license that no longer exists and the position was originally classified as having no supervisory duties. However, in October, the school committee created a new attendance officer position, and the supervisor of attendance has recently received new supervisory. As a result, it is recommended to be transferred to classification E, the next highest classification. In addition, it is recommended that a new attendance officer position be created in classification F. It is requested that this change be made effective March fifth, twenty twenty, as this item was inadverten- inadvertently missed in the March agenda. Roll call?
Consideration and action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for the salaried positions as relates to supervisor of attendance and attendance officer. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative with one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, we have a recommendation for appointment to Mr. Dylan Cook as school business manager. Explanation: After an extensive recruitment process, the superintendent is recommending the appointment of Mr. Dylan Cook as school business manager. Can we have a roll call, please?
Recommendation for appointment to Mr. Dylan Cook as school business manager. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Eight votes in the affirmative and one absent, the motion carries.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. And Mr. Dylan Cook, I know you're here, so hello and congratulations on behalf of the Chelsea School Committee.
Hello, thank you.
Okay, next up. Implementation of the Student Opportunity Act for Chelsea Public Schools. So, team, I have submitted a draft of the resolution. Um, I think for the sake of this meeting, um, I'm going to s- Okay, I'll just read it. So, well, I won't read it. It's a draft version, um, and I wanted to open it up for the school committee to provide feedback or any edits. We're happy to, um, receive those edits. And then the goal is to bring it to the next school committee meeting. And so the idea of this, um, as you heard it during Senator Sal's, well, uh, the Student Opportunity Act funding, uh, could be in jeopardy. And so we, uh, actually, Joergito and I, thank you, Mr. Jimenez, um, we thought of the idea of coming together and creating a resolution. And so here it is. Um, yes, so when you get a chance, please read it, school, uh, school committee members, and then we can come together, uh, for the next meeting and put it on the table for a vote. Okay. Uh, do I have a, can I get a roll call to accept the draft version?
Resolution to support the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act for Chelsea Public Schools.
All right, um, before, before we start, um, can I just ask, we're not vot- we're, we're not voting on the resolution. We're voting to include it in the record so that it can be reviewed by the committee.
Correct. Thank you for finding, Mr. Jimenez.
If I may, you can call this a first read and then say this is a first reading and then people can provide feedback and then you can bring it back for a second and a vote.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Did you put it up on the screen or was it a email attachment?
It was attached. Uh, it's attachment P.
Okay.
I have it here on the screen now.
Kelly, um, Chair, um, it might be, I, I don't know for the public and people who don't have it, maybe if you wanna read it, do, would you?
I'm sorry, yes, okay. My apologies. Let me get a drink of water because there were a lot of agenda. Okay, team, my apologies. I'll be happy to read the, the resolution. Okay, so Chelsea Public Schools is a gateway system that welcomes and educates all students. Together with the Chelsea School Committee and the greater community, CPS is committed to the success of all students irrespective of their immigration status, city, race, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, sex, gender identity, socioeconomic status, or beliefs. Today, the community of Chelsea is considered the most vulnerable city in Massachusetts as a result of the COVID-nineteen. This pandemic has hit Chelsea harder than any other town or city in Massachusetts with the highest percentage of COVID-nineteen cases per capita. This resolution highlights the ways in which the COVID-nineteen pandemic has exacerbated the I'm sorry, the inequities that our families have faced for decades. Long before this crisis began, the community of Chelsea was experiencing health, economic, and educational crises. COVID-nineteen has now added a layer of trauma, loss of loved ones, housing, and food insecurity, and the looming threat of getting sick. If our budget isn't properly funded, we won't be able to help our students process the trauma that already had, let alone the new trauma that this pandemic has caused. And the abs- Yeah. As a result, CPS will require significant sustained investments over a long period of time to provo- to promote the advancement of the next generation in the community of Chelsea. It is recommended, uh, that the Chelsea School Committee approve this resolution, res- section for the benefit of all students and families in the Chelsea Public Schools. Whereas, all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a well-rounded school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. And whereas, we, the members of the Chelsea School Committee, urge the le- the legislators to, as required by law, de-prioritize budget cuts to districts that have been severely underfunded for years. And whereas equitable education cannot be achieved until Chelsea Public Schools are adequately funded through the Student Opportunity Act. Now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea Public Schools will continue to advocate for more funding. Therefore be it resolved that the state fulfill its commitment to maintain and support a system of free public elementary and secondary schools with the resources dedicated to the school aid fund through the Student Opportunity Act. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Chelsea's City Council, Chelsea's State Legislators, the Massachusetts Associate Association of School Committees on behalf of the Chelsea School Committee. And so, this is, consider this the first reading. As Dr. Vida said, we will, um, allow school committee members to, uh, provide feedback and then we will bring it back to the table during the next school committee meeting for a vote. And so as, uh, or, um, committing it as a draft to the record. Ms. Say has, may I get a roll call, please?
Resolution to support the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act for Chelsea Public Schools. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
He's muted. He said yes.
Eight in the affirmative, affirmative and one absent, the motion carries.
Awesome. Eight in the affirmative, the motion carries. Next, we have school closure updates.
We added this piece because there were just, we were getting so many questions. And so I wanna be able to answer a couple of questions. So, the first topic is Chelsea High School graduation. A lot of questions have come in about that. Uh, after a task force at the high school convened with, that included students, it was decided that we would have a virtual graduation. And right now, we do not have a date for the graduation because we have to find, um, a vendor and go through procurement processes. And at this moment, we're looking at maybe i- in June, end of June, I'm not sure yet, and I will communicate that out as soon as we have a date. Um, so again, the high school graduation will be a virtual graduation. Uh, the decision was made because we are still and because of our high numbers of COVID-nineteen in the city, in the concentration in Chelsea for the safety of our public and for the safety of our students. We realize that meeting as a whole would probably not be possible. So, this is the safest option and we wanna celebrate and honor the class of twenty twenty and we will continue to do so. Um, the next piece that I've been getting questions on are grades. Will grades count? Will grade, how will I be graded? So I have, um, Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent is, has been working on a policy. And Sarah, if you could share that with everybody?
Sarah, I'd be happy to. Um, again, the, there are various grades throughout the district. The, the ones that are the most controversial or the most asked about are the ones at the high school. Um, so again, there was a group of people who did research around what other districts are doing, what we thought would be best for our community. Um, and through a lens of equity, we really wanted to think long and hard about what would be best for our kids. So again, as I mentioned in the indicators of success, quarter three grades are in place and, and are holding. Um, but what are we gonna do about quarter four? That's the big question, right? So, um, I'll start with the high school because it's the most complicated, but basically, at the high school, we have different types of courses. We have year-long courses, semester courses, and quarter-long courses. So some of those are easy. For example, the semester one courses, we had the full attendance and, and school, so those, those grades are all set for semester one. For quarter-long courses, we had quarters one, two, and three all set. Those grades are in the books and will be used towards GPA. The question comes when we come to year-long courses, semester two courses, and quarter four courses. Those are the ones that are being impacted the heaviest by this pandemic. So for year-long courses, grades from quarter one, two, and three will be earned and averaged in for final grades for GPA. However, for quarter four, we will just be giving students a P for pass. Okay? Um, similarly, for semester long, second semester courses, um, the quarter three grades will be counted, but a P will be given for quarter four. And semester two grades will not count towards GPA and will be given a, a final grade of pass fail. If the quarter three grade was passing, they'll get credit for the quarter and, and they'll move forward. Um, for plan of court, for quarter-long courses, again, similarly, a P will be given for a quarter-long semester, a quarter-four course. We just feel that with, um, all that is going on, students are doing their very best to engage. Um, but we just do not wanna be in any way penalized students who may not be able to fully participate. We will be working very hard, um, through curriculum and safety nets and summer school and next year in order to support those kids. In grades one, well, pre-K through eight, similarly, we will be giving a grade of pass for quarter four work. And students will be moving on as expected to their next grade. We will be sending you this in writing, um, following the meeting so that you can actually read it. I know it's a lot to digest orally, um, but we do have a memo for you all prepared. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Hi, Sarah. This is Marisol. So I was taking some notes. Um, thank you for your efforts in researching what other districts are doing around this. Um, I can't imagine the task. Um, and it's super layered, uh, as you said, and even taking into consideration um, high school versus K through twelve. Um, and also just thinking about, you know, a lot of different things that I, that I'm just really grateful that you guys are, are looking into. Um, you know, as a mom of a child in the Berkowitz School who has an IEP, um, I'm really grateful. And has made a world of a difference for her learning experience right now in virtual. Um, and I know that that's a huge task before us because none of us have ever done this before. So I would just be interested in hearing more as you go along about how you guys are assessing a little bit and what feedback you're getting from other parents, um, or the students? And if we could be helpful in that, whether there could be like a mechanism created, whether even if it's like a five bulleted survey again of some sort to send to parents that have books. You know, I'd just be interested to hear more feedback from the students and the parents, um, around what we do next. Um, aside from the grading, but also just thinking about, you know, next steps and their involvement in that. But thank you for your work. I know it's not, uh, it's unprecedented.
It has been an adventure, um, but one that we take on gladly. Um, I would just give a shout out to all the teachers and, and all of the, you know, curriculum and instructional people that are working so hard. And then on top of that, we have all of our support staff really trying to help with engagement and having kids just be connected with school um, and keep our community moving, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
If I can chime in, um, Sarah's team has mobilized incredibly quickly. Uh, and we have been able to just move right along and we received an update from D E S I on remote learning on last Friday night. And by Monday morning, Monday, we had, uh, ho- like, we had already had, uh, a remote plan in place. And Sarah, mostly Sarah and her team, had revised it to accommodate the new requirements and recommendations in the D E S I remote plan. And because of the quick and swiftness of that, we have already submitted the, the, uh, new document to this teachers' union to review and give us feedback. So hopefully we'll get that done within the next week or two and have it out our teachers with the new guidance. And the new guidance with the remote plan has two added components. And the first component is really reaching out to families and making sure that students are connecting online. So that's gonna be a real push. So with that push, we have to make sure we have Chromebooks, that we continue to distribute Chromebooks and that our kids are logging on and that they get the hotspots. Um, thank you, Monica and her team for working through all of that with the Chromebook distribution. But we still have to get more Chromebooks in the hands of our students. And then this second piece of the remote learning plan was standards. And they, the Department of Ed went through the standards by each grade level, streamlined them. So now, e- each grade level has what they're, they, they always had power standards. These are even more streamlined because they recognize that you can't cover anything right now. So, uh, thank you, Sarah and your team for your swift and fast work. But we can have this out probably by next week to our, um, staff. Okay, the next item we had on this report was, is summer school. Looking at all the data and just reading up on, and, and, and from guidance from D E S I, and we, we struggled with this a little bit. Do we do, do we wait? What are we gonna do for summer school? So we, as, we made a decision as a, as a cabinet, we talked about summer school and just assessing what was happening. And, and because we've been so incredibly hit so hard with this virus, we recognize that we probably will not be able to be in session in, in June or July. So based on that information, we have made a decision that summer school will be online, it will be remote learning. And now that we've made that decision, we're moving forward with planning summer programs as well. Um, Adam Delaney is, is spearheading most of our summer program. Adam, did you wanna say a word or two about just some of the things that you're working on?
Uh, yeah, sure. I mean, um, we actually hired a, a one-time position for a summer program manager, so uh, Julie Fori and I are, are working together. So uh Julie Fori and I are, are working together. Starting to hire site supervisors that can um oversee those specific programs. We have, we actually have a very robust summer programming um venue across the district. Um and we did consider holding it off until August to hope that we could do brick and mortar. But ultimately, we decided that not doing anything in July would really hurt the momentum of learning. So um I think that, that factored in a lot. So we're hoping to have a virtual learning um summer programming set up across the district beginning July sixth.
Awesome, great work. And the last topic is reentry. And this is something we'll probably have on future, future agenda is, is reentry. And we've been getting a lot of questions about that. And, and right now, at this point, we, we don't know when we're going to be actually physically able to be in school again. What we do know is when we come back and we're able to be in school again, it's going to look different. And it could be that we stagger schedule, like some, uh or that we do year-round schooling or that a group of students comes in, comes in for two days and another group is on remote learning. It, right now, the Department of Education is researching best practices in this area. Chelsea, we have a group, a, a, a small group, a task force that's uh looking at research and literature for what are the best practices in this area as well because we're- sure, at the end of the day, that when it, when our governor says it's okay for us to come back to school, we want to make sure that our staff and that our students are safe. And so we are doing research right now to make sure that we have the safest reentry for our staff and our students and families. Again, school is not going to look the same when we come back. We recognize that and we already know that. How and what that's going to look like, we're still, we're still going to seek guidance from we, the Department of Education and the Commissioner, they're working on some guidance. And, and then we're going to go from there. So that's where we're at. And again, I don't know the dates.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bada. School committee members, do we have any questions?
I have one, Ms. Garcia.
Go ahead, Ms. Velez.
Um what about children that were going to enter kindergarten? Um what is that registration looking like for the fall?
Well, I'm excited. We are, we have done, and I'm going to let Adam speak to this since he oversees PIC and just a moment. We have a soft, we have, we're doing a soft opening of PIC so that we can register students. And what, well, we're, our students, it's going to be interesting, our kindergarteners. Uh we will have to register virtual, uh virtual, when they enter school, it might be a virtual school. Um and we're going to, we're going to figure that out. It's, but I want, I would like for Adam to talk about our, how we've been strategizing about registration and a soft open for PIC right now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to be brief, but it's actually quite complex because we have um a few different types of registrations that we're working with. Um first and foremost, it's students moving into the district during this time that we have to register to start now um because they have a civil right to free and appropriate public education. Danny Mojica at PIC has been doing a phenomenal job. He has been very, very flexible, doing appointment only. He um in some cases, he's able to do the registration online virtually, but often um it's quite complex and he has to do it in person. So he has been going in to PIC uh appointment or- we have not started that yet. Um we are looking at uh an online registration uh process and that's something that will be coming out in the next couple of weeks. Um and the other thing that I think, um I know a lot of parents out there are concerned about, um so I'm hoping I can alleviate their concerns if they're watching. Um because we also, at this time of year, are typically mailing out uh school preference forms for uh early learning center students who are moving up to the complex or fourth graders at the complex who are going to the, one of the three middle schools. Uh so Danny Mojica and I are working on a process to attempt to do that virtually um to the best that we can and we'll try to do the, the majority of them that way. So uh more to come on that over the next couple of weeks as well. Um and then what will happen is the families that we don't get a response from, we will do an outreach to make sure that ev- it's equitable for everyone to have that same choice.
Thank you, Adam. Thanks, Adam. School committee members, any other questions before we move on to item ten?
I'm sorry, it's Marisol again. I, I don't want to take up too much time. I just had two quick follow-up questions. Um one was regarding the summer program for Dr. Albada. Um if I understood correctly, so let me just summarize, so I don't have to ask all this stuff now. But rather, you, just to clarify, Adam would be the person to follow up with regarding details about the summer program. And I, I heard you mention, so the summer program is remote?
Yes.
We are hiring or uh someone has been hired as a site supervisor?
Site supervisor who's going to over, is, this person will oversee summer school, Adam.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Just looking at my notes really quick. Um and then the last thing I had was, um what do you mean by a soft opening, Adam? What does that mean for PIC, like a soft opening of, yeah, what does that mean, like a soft open?
So they're not fully open doing all of the things that they normally do and they're not at the office unless they have an appointment. Um so a, a full opening, they would be registering at this point for the twenty twenty-one school year next year. So incoming kindergarten students um a- a- and what have you. Um but we're not at that point yet. Um and we're not putting multiple staff members in the buildings. They have access to communicate via phone uh or email to set up an appointment. And then once that appointment's set up, they'll go and meet with them. So anyone coming into the district right now, they will get enrolled. Um uh but we're not registering for next year. So by soft opening, we simply mean they're not doing their um, the, the full range of services that they normally provide.
So just to reiterate, if parents want to register their students, they can email, they can email Danny Mojica and we're doing appointment, appointments.
Ms. Santiago, do you have any follow-up comments? No? Okay.
Thank you so much, guys. I know that was a lot of questions. Thank you.
Awesome, those were great questions, so don't apologize. Okay, team, next we have communications. Do we have any um announcements or anything for these items?
I don't have any announcements or communications.
Awesome. Okay, great, moving right along. There's um, I just want to take a moment to congratulate our National Honor Society. They will have their induction virtually on May twenty-sixth. Um and so congratulations to the students on the National Honor Society.
And as you said, Kelly, uh Chair, uh they are having an induction and it will be at the end of May online. And I do have another, just a shout out to uh Jay Lee Ortiz, whose wonderful artwork has been displayed everywhere on um the Chelsea Record front page. And I, we put it on our website. Uh the Massachusetts Superintendent Association, Association saw the tweet, tweeted it out, and then they asked me if they could place it on their media platforms. I said, go for it. Uh we're just so proud of our students during this time. Proud of uh just everything that everybody is doing. Uh and uh if, check our website, check our Twit- Twitter and our Facebook posts. We've been posting a lot. Um it's been, uh our teachers have made videos, our principals have made videos. So check it out, go to our Facebook and Twitter as well.
Thank you, Dr. Bada.
I want to make a comment.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes, I want to thank the superintendent and all the teachers and administrators, the staff, the custodians and everybody that works for the Chelsea Public Schools, all the things they're doing be, above and beyond from while we're going through this uh. And I will- helps us so we know what's going on when the parents are calling us for any information. So I appreciate what you're doing. And I miss seeing all of yous. I mean, even though we're here, I mean, I miss seeing you and hugging and kissing yous for crying out loud. A nice tie you have, Adam, you got a nice tie and shirt on. You're at home, you don't need that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Carlisle, and I absolutely second that. Uh the Chelsea Public School System has done an incredible job. And so I want to second that, thank you. Um before adjourned this meeting, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Anna Hernandez's mom, Juana Garcia. So if we can, just stand um in silence. Thank you. Ms. Hernandez, if you need us, we are here for you um and we love you.
Thank you so much, everyone. And thank you for all your support throughout my mother's illness and all the times that you guys supported me. Her illness was long and you guys went through it all with me. Thank you very much to all of you. You are my family and I'm very grateful to all of you. And thank you for the flowers, they were beautiful.
You're very welcome. Um that's what we are, we're a family. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, that was beautiful. We are a team and we will get through this pandemic together with the wonderful leadership of our central office. Um any more comments or questions before we adjourn this meeting? Ms. Velez?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody and for our viewers. If you didn't see us clearly, um please be patient. Um this is all new for us, we're all trying to get used to this new normal. Um and like Ms. Carlisle said, for the first time, I wish I was sitting in those chambers with those lights bothering my eyes and sitting here um looking at the screen. But um we're really all trying to do the best that we can and please reach out to any of us with questions. Um we're here to help you and support you. Um not just with school-related issues, but many of us are connected in the city in other ways that we could help um families. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
And just one more thing, tomorrow is hero day for our food service workers. So a huge shout out to our-
Um to our Chelsea Teachers Union, uh I ju- amazed uh to hear that they raised over sixty thousand dollars um for this fund and that is really, really amazing. Um and while we honor our teachers and we're in the process of trying to honor them with, you know, great salaries, uh I do recognize that the humbleness and the generosity of just giving back to our community in that way was just so touching. I know a lot of teachers need support too. Um so I'm just really grateful and I just wanted to say, you know, if you talk to one of the teachers, tell them thank you for, for what they're doing outside of the classroom, you know, in general right now. So thank you guys for that.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Okay, so with that, um team and audience, I apologize for any um delay, technical difficulties, my shortness of breath, having gone to the gym throughout this pandemic. Um and we hope that you stay safe out there um and reach out if you have any questions. So I have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
My second.
Meeting adjourned and I wish I had the gavel, but meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Kelly, thank you, everyone.